Good evening, everyone. I'd like to bring the regular Board of Education meeting on October 21st to order. I'd like to, could everybody stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
In case of emergen-- ooh, that one of them. In case of emergencies, the exits are clearly marked in the back of the room and the side, and make your way to the doors on the outside of the building. As a new, as a process we started last year, we're going to ask if there are any students in the audience that would like to come forward and speak to the board on any matter that concerns them. As I don't see anybody coming up, we'll bring that back next week. Any and all correspondents are on the tables out in the hall. Anything that we could leave there, anything, we didn't redact anything out, so they're out in the hall and you can see what comes to the board on some occasion. We have a great night here ahead of us. We are recognizing a lot of our students, and that's what we all aspire to do, to achieve greatness in our kids, and these students have achieved something very special, and we're going to honor them tonight. Mr. Bartels?
Thank you, Mr. O'Shea. We're going to start with National Merit Scholarship commended students. Mr. Murphy was not feeling well, so he won't be here tonight. So we're going to have Kelly Ramsey, our Director of School Counseling, present the students.
I guess we'll just give them a second to come in. So as Mr. Bartels mentioned, these are our National Merit Scholarship winners. Approximately 1.5 million high school students take the PSAT each year. These students took the PSAT exam last spring. Of those tested, 50,000 students, about 3.3% are commended scholars, and 16,000, 1.1% are chosen as National Merit Scholar semifinalists. There's a nationwide cutoff for commended scholars, but semifinalists are chosen according to state-by-state cutoffs. Semifinalists continue with the process and compete to be named National Merit Finalists, and 7,500 National Merit Scholarships worth more than $32 million will be offered to students next spring. This year, we are proud to acknowledge the individual accomplishments of our winners. This is also the largest number of National Merit Scholars we've had in more than 15 years. So first to congratulate our commended students: Casey Abrams, And we also had one student that moved out of district who was also a commended student, Nayla Babulka. She's no longer in Rockville Center, but we congratulate her as well. And now, congratulations to our semifinalists who continue in the competition: Ben Lamott Congratulations, everybody.
Now I'll have the introduction of the Southside High School Student Government Officers. Dr. Janine Sempino will present them.
Good evening. I first want to say Mr. Murphy was really upset he could not be here tonight. He, before we even spoke, he said, "You have to know, these kids are outstanding." So I just wanted to let you know that. This is from Mr. Murphy. This time each year, we take the time to recognize our newly-elected student officers, both the SGA, or Student Government Association, and the class officers. They always deserve to be congratulated and thanked, but that is not enough for this year. We were unable to host student elections last year, so they were held in late September. Our student leadership did an extraordinary job of contributing to one of the best spirit weeks and homecomings in recent memory. From lip sync, Minds Olympics, and decorating their class banners, to our first-ever pep rally, these students demonstrated the flexibility, creativity, and sense of community while juggling their other responsibilities. We look forward to working with you this year, and on behalf of the high school staff and everyone who has enjoyed homecoming week, thank you. The Student Government Association Officers: Sophia Idinalo, President; Stephen Okawahan, First Vice President; Christina Hafanas, Second Vice President; Finn Mayer, Secretary; and Jayden Wetstein, Treasurer. The class presidents: Brianna Hayes, Senior Class; Ally Peloro, Junior Class; Noah Feinenbaum, Sophomore Class; and Macalister Morris, Freshman Class. Congratulations.
I would also like to recognize some of our student athletes tonight, beginning with Newsday's Top 100 Long Island Athletes for the Fall 2021. Kelly Ramsey will present these students.
The first group of athletes being acknowledged tonight, all were selected by Newsday as a Top 25 or Top 100 Long Island athlete in their respective sports. Athletes, as you hear your name, would you please come to the front? Congratulations to Cameron Coletti for Girls' Cross Country; Kiara Kennedy for Girls Swim; Lucas Anisell for Boys Soccer; Emma Hospadka for Girls Soccer; Christina Lekowski for Girls Soccer; Emma Madden for Girls Soccer; Anna Penneke for Girls Soccer; and TJ Mayer for Boys Football. This is an amazing accomplishment to be recognized as a top Long Island athlete, and the Southside Athletic Community would like to acknowledge your hard work, sacrifice, and dedication to your sport with a big round of applause.
Now for a presentation of our 2021 Boys Baseball Nationals Champions, Coach Tom Smith.
Over the past four years, the Boys Baseball team has been working and building each year, looking to take the next step. After not playing the 2020 season due to the pandemic, the team came together and said, "Why not us?" The seniors built a feeling of family very quickly, and we couldn't be any prouder to lead this group of student athletes. As we watched our seniors conclude their careers at Southside, we are proud to point out that they led an instrumental group of underclassmen to achieve their ultimate goal. Our season's success depended on self-discipline, determination, and a complete team effort to accomplish those goals. But there is one word to describe the 2021 baseball team: that is resilience. The way that the team was able to handle adversity and showed their true character. When they had their backs to the wall, they were able to respond and crown themselves as county champions. Gentlemen, when I announce your name, I'd like you to please come up on the stage. Sean Britt. Sean also earned Access Baseball's All Long Island, was named to the Access Baseball All Long Island Team, as well as received All County, All County honors from the Coaches' Andrew Fingilton. Andrew was also, also won All League honors this season. TJ Moore. TJ was also named to the Access Baseball All Long Island Team and won All-Conference honors, as well as was named the County MVP for the playoffs. Paul Mata, who was named to the All League Honorable Mention as an individual. Matt Morn. Thomas Mc, oh, go ahead. Scott Restivo. And our last two members who are not here as well: Billy Tolkien and Jack Temple. Let's give a round of applause to the 2021 Boys Baseball Nationals Champions. Thank you, everyone.
Also want to recognize Head Coach Tom Smith, Assistant Coaches Joe Nataro and Michael Salito, and thank them for their support for the team and the time they put in. Okay, now I'd like to move to recognition of the school board. New York State School Boards Association recognizes October 18th to 22nd as School Board Recognition Week. This is a time to promote awareness and understanding of the important work performed by school board members. Rockville Center is joining all public school districts across the state to celebrate School Board Recognition Week, to honor our local school board members for their commitment to our district and its children. It takes strong schools to build a strong community, and these men and women devote countless hours to making sure our schools are helping every child learn at a higher level. They make the tough decisions every month and spend many hours studying education issues and regulations in order to provide the kind of accountability our community expects. School board members give the community residents a voice in education decision-making. School board members are not paid for their work. They do it because of their commitment to our children, to provide them with the best education possible. They endure long hours and controversial issues that weigh on their minds well beyond the times of board meetings. Conversations with parents about a multitude of issues take place on the phone, in the stores, on athletic fields, at concerts, never seem to end. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of our current board members, as well as each of our prior board members, for their service to the Rockville Center School District. Your work is truly appreciated. Thank you.
I'd like to invite the board members, if you want to, you know, watch the chamber singers. I don't know if you're able to scooch out into the seats, so turn around. "These are the times that try men's souls. Tyranny like hell is not easily conquered, yet we have the consolation with us that the heart of the conflict, the more glorious the triumph." These words were written by Thomas Paine in the fall of 1776, during the darkest and coldest days of the American Revolution, when General Washington's army had lost New York City and was facing mass desertions. Washington had those words read to his troops, following which they would cross the Delaware and capture Trenton and Princeton, renewing their confidence and resolve, and arguably turning the tide of the American Revolution. These are the times that try our souls. We don't, don't often speak of the soul in public education, but I have a feeling that for the Board of Ed and this community, these are the times that try our souls, our spirits, our very core. We're not fighting a revolutionary war, but certainly over the last two years, we are faced with challenging circumstances that are unprecedented. I know, board members, that you dig down deep into your souls to find answers, consensus, compromise, and to borrow a term from Mr. Paine, common sense. In social, in, in public schools in Rockville Center, we're invested in social, emotional learning, mindfulness. In arts education, we've always tapped into that inclination of the human spirit that is emotional, spiritual, psychological. Performing and visual arts elicit emotional investments from us and permit us to express complex concepts and feelings that integrate so many other disciplines and make an indelible mark on our psyches, our spirits, our souls. Our souls are rich and multivalent, prone to joy and peace, also pain and tribulation, and finally, strength and determination. We're here to recognize the Board of Ed for digging down deep and finding in your souls the strength to do the right thing for our children. We want you to know, we support you, and we thank you, and we do this the best way we know how, by sharing our music with you. Dr. Friling and the chamber singers.
I've got peace like a river, I've got peace like a river, I've got peace like a river in my soul. I've got peace like a river, I've got peace like a river, I've got peace like a river in my soul. I've got pain like in a rock, I've got pain like in a rock, I've got pain like in a rock in my soul. I've got pain like in a rock, I've got pain like in a rock, I've got pain like in a rock in my soul. I've got strength like a mountain, I've got strength like a mountain, I've got strength like a mountain in my soul. I've got strength like a mountain, I've got strength like a mountain, I've got strength like a mountain in my soul. I've got joy like a mountain, I've got joy like a mountain, I've got joy like a mountain in my soul. I've got joy like a mountain, I've got joy like a mountain, I've got joy like a mountain in my soul. I've got determination, I've got determination, I've got determination in my soul. I've got peace like a river, I've got strength like a mountain, I've got joy like a mountain in my soul.
That was beautiful. Mr. Bartels, we have acceptance of gifts.
Yeah, we have one gift of two buddy benches from the Hewitt PTA that will go on their outside playground, so we thank the Hewitt PTA for that. We also have a gift from the Ryan Patrick O'Shea Foundation of $30,000 for a Sources of Strength program in the elementary schools, and I believe there are representatives here.
You have a little presentation. Come on up. We're going to go up on stage. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with all of you tonight. I am here tonight with some of the board members of the Ryan Patrick O'Shea Foundation. This is my wife, Mary O'Shea. This is Mrs. Kathy Lamachia. This is Donna Gales. Mr. Michael Smythe, and my sister, Mrs. Elisa Pino. And for those of you who don't me, know me, my name is John O'Shea. The Ryan Patrick O'Shea was formed shortly after the loss of our 18-year-old son, Ryan. To everyone around him, he seemed to be a well-adjusted and happy teenager. Unknown to, unknown to us, he suffered silently, and because he didn't have the tools he needed to overcome his struggles, he took his life a little less than three years ago. The Ryan Patrick, the Ryan Patrick O'Shea Foundation is here tonight to help the children of Rockville Center develop the skills and understand the tools that will help them through the challenges they will face. We all face challenges on a daily basis, and learning how to navigate through those challenges is the most important thing we can teach our children. Good mental health is as important, and some may argue, more important than good physical On the, on behalf of the entire board of the Ryan Patrick O'Shea Foundation, we are here tonight to commit to fully fund the cost of implementing the Sources of Strength program in the elementary schools of the Rockville Center School District. The Sources of Strength program is a nationally-recognized and evidence-based program with proven successes in teaching our children how to recognize and process their struggles. The Sources of Strength program helps us become proactive, as opposed to being reactive. Our total contribution for the Sources of Strength program for the Rockville Center Elementary Schools will be $51,815. Tonight, we will present to Mr. Bartels a check for $30,000 to start that program. The foundation will continue to support the Sources of Strength program over the next two school years. Last year, the foundation was able to fund the Sources of Strength program here at Southside High School, and we can clearly see the benefits from that program. We are so grateful for the ability to bring this program into our schools and into some of our neighboring school districts. One of the foundation's goals is to provide as many children possible with the tools to navigate through the struggles of life and overcome those struggles. We are also so proud to be offering a mental health adult community talk here in this auditorium next Tuesday at 7:30. The Director of Sources of Strengths will be our speaker, and he will be speaking about recognizing the signs and struggles in ourselves and our loved ones, and how we can overcome those struggles. He will also take questions after his presentation. We urge you to please join us next Tuesday here at 7:30. In closing, if I can offer you three simple words to always remember, they can mean the difference between life and death, happiness and hopelessness. Talk saves lives. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Bartels. As we move on, we have some items for action on the agenda, and we would like to start with winter activities. We'll start, Mr. Bartels?
We'll start, Mr. Bartels?
Yes, we have a number of different events coming up, and now that we're going to be moving indoors for some of these, we wanted to have a discussion about how these events were going to operate as far as audiences and so forth. So we wanted to start with talking about our winter concerts. And Dr. Zohar, would you like to talk a little bit about that?
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. You may recall it's less than a year ago, I think it was last January or February, I came to speak to you about bringing our theater students out of their basements and back to the stage here at the high school and the middle school, where they would perform their spring shows. Appropriately distanced, masked, but without an audience, but it would be videotaped. I said at the time, this is a baby step back to normalcy. We all want things to be back to normal. Last night in this auditorium, I told the folks who came to the Triumph Honor Society induction and the IB Music Night, that was our first performance in 18 months that was live with a live audience. Another baby step, another baby step back to normalcy. Another step forward is that our bands, our choruses, and our orchestras have been performing live with one another. Again, not from their living rooms or basement, but in the schools, with the whole ensemble playing together. Now we're observing three feet of distance and still wearing masks. Baby steps. However, at this point, the district protocol for bringing live audiences is that they be masked and maintain six feet of distance. At that level, we can safely sit between 120 to 160 people in our middle school and high school auditoria. Our elementary school gyms and auditoria are even smaller than that in their capacity. To the extent that an event has a smaller number of student participants, we will welcome limited numbers of the students, parents, and families to be live spectators, like last night's Triumph induction and IB Music Night. Also coming up, the Middle School Broadway Review on November 5th and 6th, and the high school drama, Twelve Angry Jurors, on November 18, 19, and 20, are all being planned in similar fashion. Performed live with a live but limited size audience in the auditorium. On the other hand, when we have hundreds of students performing in events such as our winter concerts, the performing venue cannot accommodate a live audience. For example, concerts involve, the smallest ones about 150 students, and the largest one, 280 students. So even if we limit the audience to one or two family members, you can do the math, it's impossible to sit an audience six feet apart in any of our spaces with those numbers of kids. So with those limitations, we're planning at the moment to have students perform in their full ensembles, the bands, orchestras, and choirs, and have these performances videotaped and made available for viewing on the night the concert was scheduled on the school calendar. The good news is, again, all of our ensembles will be able to perform live with one another. Not virtually. Virtually is where we piece it all together from little snippets of film. No, they're actually performing live with each other. The experience of making music with your peers is essential. In the plan for the pre-recorded concert performances, I thought it would be good if their peers would be audience members and clap. For example, if the chorus is on the stage, the band would be out here and clap for the chorus members, and then we flip it around so that at least it would feel like an audience is present. In fact, an audience is present, they'd be performing for one another. Please understand, I would like nothing better than to have our children perform for live audiences. At the moment, the limitation of six feet of distance makes it all but impossible. I've consulted with peers in the county, district, and building administrators here in Rockville Center, as well as parents and community members about different ways to overcome this challenge. At this moment, I don't have a better plan than the videotape option. However, I'm open to other ways to approach this, and I'm eager to hear from board members at the moment, your questions and ideas for how we can overcome this.
Dr. Zohar, some of the possibilities that have been talked about, I don't know if you've kind of vetted them out yet. One is to split the concert into two concerts on the same night, kind of spread it out, and also kind of in a similar fashion, split the concert into multiple nights.
Right. So let me address, so when I think of multiple nights, like if we were going to say we'd do the band on one night, the chorus another night, orchestra another night. We do 11 concerts, so multiply it out, that's 33 nights. There aren't enough nights, you know, in December to actually do that. Also, we have the issue with the facilities. Are the facilities available for 33 nights? The answer is no. Doing it on the same night is a little more feasible, but the high school is the only one of our buildings that has a big parking lot. When I think about, like if we did a 7 o'clock chorus concert at the middle school and then an 8 o'clock band or orchestra concert, the traffic in the street, because there's no parking lot. So I just imagine it to be a sort of a logistical nightmare and create traffic jams. At the elementary level, I see the same issue. Most of the elementary schools do not have a big parking lot like the high school does. So, I mean, that's a possibility at the high school level. I don't see it as a possibility in any of the other six buildings. The other thing about that is, at the elementary level, you know, the performances are all but 10 minutes long. So to bring people in, it'll take them longer to park, get in the school, get seated, the concert's over in 10 minutes, then they leave, and another, you know, and with the traffic outside. So I, logistically, I don't see that except at the high school.
So, I've been looking through the requirements, the six feet requirements, and speaking with the Nassau County Department of Health, I actually spoke with them today. The biggest concern really is unvaccinated individuals. And that's really the issue. So when we talk about six feet inside the schools, we have to do it because the majority of our students are not vaccinated. They can't get vaccinated at this point. When we get into the events, it's not knowing who's vaccinated or who's not vaccinated. If we're able to limit the numbers by indicating who's vaccinated, who's not vaccinated, so just let in vaccinated adults producing the vaccination so we can see that before they enter the building, is that something that we could do?
Sure. I mean, if you allowed only vaccinated people, and that's, you know, for you guys to determine what the community will bear, but then, I mean, my understanding is in Nassau County, about 75% of the people are vaccinated. So we go from no live audience members to three-quarters of the people coming. To me, it's better to have three-quarters of somebody than nobody. That's the way I look at it.
So I think the, we've seen the numbers progressing in a positive direction, and we've had more and more individuals vaccinated. I know our staff, we're up over 90% of our staff is vaccinated at this point. And I believe community issues is very similar. So, in discussing, again, with the Department of Health, they've indicated that it's the contact tracing is the big issue. If somebody's vaccinated, they don't have to be, well, they would be contact traced, but they wouldn't be quarantined. So theoretically, if you had, everybody in the room was vaccinated, that would work. If we, if you had to put in vaccinated and unvaccinated, I believe we'd have to kind of have a seating chart of where everybody is.
Well, at the middle, at the middle school, this, so the idea, so my, let me make sure I understand you correctly. If people are vaccinated, we don't have to observe distancing? We presume they'd still wear a mask, right?
Correct. Yes, all wearing masks.
So then we don't have that, this room, if everybody that's coming in here is vaccinated, we could fill it, right? Or, you know, we generally, if we could fill this section. But let's talk about the middle school for a minute, where we have a balcony. Theoretically, you could have unvaccinated people at six feet apart in the balcony, and vaccinated people with no distance downstairs, and we wouldn't have the issue of not having enough seats. We'd have more than enough seats in that instance. You know, I don't know how people would feel about that, you know, putting vaccinated people in one place and unvaccinated people in a different location, six feet apart. For me, again, we go from nobody to a lot of people. And I'd rather have the kids perform for a lot of people.
Comments from the board?
Personally, I have a little bit of problem doing something like that. But that's, you know, that's a majority of the board. Why, how many people can sit in this room tonight safely? We had that figured out.
At six feet apart, it's about 120.
That's all we can fit in here, technically. And why couldn't we do our elementary performances here and just invite one parent from each room?
Well, so the smallest number of kids we have performing is 150, so.
75, pardon me.
Right. So, and by the way, the middle school plate, like so, at Covert and at Riverside and at Watson, they generally do their performances in their own gyms or auditoriums. But those spaces are even smaller than this, and so I think the maximum people we could sit there are 60 and 70. So, but even if we had a concert here, we still have to say to some of the parents, you can't come. At this, at six feet.
Well, if you're telling a quarantined parent, an unvaccinated parent, they can't, you know, they can't come, it's kind of the same thing. But I think that one representative of family, if we can make that work out, why couldn't we, you know, couldn't we accommodate some of our schools here, our elementary schools here with one parent?
So John, we already do. So Wilson Concert traditionally is here. Hewitt at the Winter is traditionally at the middle school. Middle school is slightly larger. We have a capacity at the middle school at six feet for 200 people. But if we were to change, if we were to say that vaccinated people can sit, say, downstairs with no spacing, and then unvaccinated people could sit upstairs with spacing, we could accommodate everyone. We wouldn't have to limit the number at all. You know, because downstairs at the middle school, you could sit like 300, 400 people. Upstairs, six feet apart, you could sit about 116 people.
I understand that concept, but for me personally, that just seems like a little, I don't know. It's disturbing to me, but it might not be disturbing to the rest of the board.
No, I mean, I'm open to, I'm open to ideas. I mean, I'm eliciting from you ideas. I don't know, the current protocol just prevents any number. You know, I mean, like I said, 120 is great, but when there's 200 kids in the concert, except for the high school where we could say, all right, the chorus will perform, and then an hour later, we can do that here easily. It's not easy to do anywhere else.
And, I mean, I understand you say some performances are only 10 minutes long, but for most parents, it's worth their 10 minutes to see their kids perform for the first time in how many years? It's been too long.
Right.
And we talk about getting past this, even though we can't, but we have to make, in my opinion, we have to make every effort to get past it to make us go back to a normal existence as best we can, and this doesn't seem like we're doing that. It seems like we're stuck in the past.
You mean, if we keep the six feet of distance?
No, 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 we can't go against that. I understand that. But if we don't make every effort to do a live performance with family, someone in the family here, I think that, in my opinion, I think it's not a good step forward. We're doing athletics, we're doing all kinds of things, so we need to bring that back.
Well, I think, I talked to Carol, and like Carol was explaining to me, Rosetto, that with athletics, she's got the same principle at work. So like she said, if there's a volleyball game and there's 14 kids on the team, so if they all bring two parents, that's 28 people, you can adequately space them in the gym with no problem. The same way, last night, we had 14 kids perform at IB Music Night. We had about 30 parents out here, and it was fine. So it's the same principle, you know?
But the numbers make it more difficult for us.
But the numbers, so when she does red and blue, it's another whole story. That's, I see it as an item on the agenda. It's another story. Her red and blue is analogous to our big concerts, in terms of numbers.
Dr. Zohar, if we could do, it's green. Mr. Kroger, if you're out there, it's green. Let me try this one. Better? Okay. To me, the perfect win would be like a combination of things, right? So first, I'm so happy the students will be performing together, because that to me is the first victory. As hard as I know, everybody worked last year to put the recorded sessions together, and I know how much that took from everybody involved. I would love to see the students together, so that's the first great thing. If we could offer a seat or two to the parents, then that's a second victory. But also on top of that, there could be parents that like the comfort of watching this at home, and we've had other events livestreamed. Can we talk a little bit about what that might entail? Is it a lot of work for us to put these things out live? And some parents may opt to watch it at home and send one parent or say, hey, both of us would rather stay home and watch it together. As long as my child's on the stage with their peers, I'm happy to watch it at home. Is that a possibility too?
I think live streaming is always a possibility. The tech people, Mr. Kroger, Mr. Lickter, have informed me that remembering the middle school graduation where there was some glitch, like live streaming is not as, is more complicated than just recording it and posting it later, which is why I went with that option, because we got to do it 11 times. You know what I mean? So I would defer to Mr. Kroger, Mr. Lickter, if they say live streaming is an option, and we could say, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, there's 150 kids in the concert. We have an auditorium at the middle school that can sit 160, six feet apart. So one parent could come, and then everybody else livestreams it? I would be fine with that. I don't know how you and folks feel about that.
Don't we livestream red and blue?
Yes. You mean, even when there are live people in the gym, yes. And I think, well, red and blue's another item, but, you know, yeah, red and blue's live. And these concerts, by the way, usually, some of them are in fact videotaped and broadcast on the school's channel later. Usually, a number of the high school and middle school concerts are done that way. So it's not livestreamed at the moment it's happening, but it's broadcast later.
So if we did, I'm sorry, if we did both, so if there was a problem with livestreaming, we'd still have the backup of the regular filming, and that could be shown at a later date and time?
Right.
It would give us a little insurance policy if a problem...
Right. So John, what you're proposing, if I'm understanding, is leaving the six-foot protocol and having as few people as we can fit at that?
As many people as we can fit at a six-foot protocol.
As many people as we can fit six feet apart, which is fewer than one per family in some instances, in most instances, and then livestream it. You know, I don't have a problem with that. I think that would be fine. I defer, again, to the technical guys, you know, if that's doable, or how complicated or easy or hard. But it's okay with me. I would rather have, listen, I would rather have kids perform with real bodies out there than not.
I just had a quick question. What is the capacity of the gymnasium? How many people could we fit in there at six feet apart?
Which gymnasium?
The main gymnasium here.
That I don't know. Is there a high school staff member who knows? I know this room, but I don't know the gymnasium.
I'm just wondering if we're having concerts that have multiple disciplines performing. If we had, say, the chorus performing in here, could we have the orchestra performing in the gym? So that we're still utilizing the same time, we're just utilizing our space, and then having orchestra parents in the gym watching, chorus parents in here?
The only problem I see with that is there are kids who cross over. There are kids who are both in orchestra and in chorus, or both in band and in chorus. And that's true, by the way, at all levels. It's true in the elementary, middle, and high. In elementary, everybody's in chorus, right? So however many kids are in the chorus, that's how many kids are in the concert, because it's the whole grade.
Yeah, or maybe if there'd be a way that, instead of doing multiple disciplines on one night, that there is a night solely dedicated for chorus, and then you could kind of differentiate, like if there's a freshman chorus, I don't know how it's set up, but just that we're really utilizing our space so that we could get as many people. And personally, for the elementary schools, I'd love to see them utilize the middle school or high school space, if it's open, so that they can have the live performance, like a covert, which is too small.
Right. But keep in mind, again, if we were to send, like, there are small elementary schools and large schools. The ones like Hewitt, and Hewitt's already usually at the middle school, and Wilson's already usually here. But those are the schools that have 250 participants. So even this room with 120 seats, it's not feasible. I mean, I've really run through all of these possibilities. I thought of bringing everybody to the middle school. But all right, 160 seats at the middle school. It doesn't cut it, it's less than one parent per kid, and so somebody has to not come. And I don't know how to tell parents, you're the ones that don't come.
I don't know if we could almost do a survey and see, you know, get a roll call of a parent's opinion of whether they'd be willing to watch on livestream or videotape and not go, or they're not available to go? I don't know if we could do something like that, is that a possibility?
Sure, we could do a survey.
Or even have like an RSVP, where if you're comfortable giving your vaccination status and set the downstairs up in that way, and you're comfortable doing that, you can do it. And then if you're not comfortable or you're not vaccinated, and you choose to sit upstairs, if you responded in an RSVP fashion, we'd be able to discuss who could sit where. You don't have to reveal it, is what I'm saying. You can choose to sit six feet apart.
So effectively, you make a reservation.
Right.
Right.
I mean, like in this room, you could do it, the middle being one section and the two sides being the other, or the other way around. You know, I mean, you could divide, like the middle and... You know, I mean, you could divide, like, the middle and high school rooms present this possibility, I think, easily. You know, I don't know that the elementary gymnasium make that easy or hard, but that certainly is possible, you know, have people, like a Google survey.
Right.
And say, you know, would you feel okay submitting your vax card? I'm open to all ideas.
Can I also just ask a question about the spacing? I'm not sure if I'm not understanding or if I missed something, but I was under the impression that you only had to be three feet apart while masked and six feet if unmasked. So, why in this situation, if our audience is all masked, why do they need to be six feet apart?
That's the $64,000 question. I asked the same question. The three feet with masks is for kids in school. Six feet is for adults that come in as an audience. Now, you're asking me why? I can't, I don't know. I'm asking you why. I don't know. I'd like to ask somebody why, but that's the rule.
Yeah, that's, that's the rule. The guidance is, yeah, three feet between students, so they could accommodate in-school, in-person learning, that's, I guess that was the allowance that was made by the Department of Health. For everybody else, between students and adults, and between other adults, it's supposed to be six feet and masks. It's always includes masks.
Thank you.
I, I hope we do everything we possibly can to bring our parents, some of our parents, a group of our parents, and to see their children, because that's one more step towards normalcy, and it needs, we need to start making all these moves forward for the well-being of everybody in the community, the parents and the children.
Well, John, I will tell you that when I discussed this with June Chang back in September, his advice, and actually, Robert, on his first day on the job, told me the same exact thing, which is, you can't plan too far in advance, the rules may change, right? But, like, I put this plan of the videotaping in place, because here we are, late in October, I gotta plan for something. You know, if we can't fit the audience, I have to plan something. So, my greatest joy would be if the rules changed, and we could have an audience, and then it's all, you know, it's a non-issue. But if the rule stays the same, and there's some hybrid of, you know, one parent per kid in some places, you know, we, we could go there, or the survey, there's a survey, you know, I would be happy to investigate any of those to make that work. It's just that the six feet, and, and, Mrs. Messier, I mean, that question you asked is the question. I don't know the answer why, but that's what's got us stuck in this place.
Yeah, so that's, that's a key point, why I wanted it on the agenda tonight, is just to give everybody the update first, that everybody, all students will be in person. There'll be no more taping of students this year. So, that was the first step, as Ms. Hackett mentioned earlier. So, that was very important for us. And the second step, we are still working on, we're looking at the different options, we're still investigating different things. But I think the goal for everybody is try to get as many people in as we can, so that, you know, we can try to get back to some sort of normalcy.
Good.
And most importantly, for seniors and kids graduating from the grammar schools, that last performance means so much to parents. Personally, I missed it with my daughter, and I know a lot of parents feel that way, when it's your senior and it's the senior night, I see kids shaking their heads. It's, that performance means so much. There's so many things that happen at those performances, that it's important to try to at least get those kids in.
I know, it's so important for parents and for the students to have their parents there, and such an important feeling. Thank you, Dr. Zouar.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Zouar.
Also, with red and blue, Carol Rosetto couldn't be here tonight, but I just wanted to let everybody know, we wanted to kind of get back to the way we've been doing it with red and blue as far as students. So, we want full student participation this year, make sure everybody's there live. Our kind of base plan, as similar what Dr. Zouar had mentioned, was to have red team perform, blue team be spectators, blue team perform, red team be spectators, so you would have, you know, audiences for each. But again, we're, we're looking for additional ways that we can get parents in some sort, whether it's some sort of tickets, one, one adult per child, or, it's such an important part of this community that I know, you know, everybody would like to get back in there. But we are looking at different possibilities, and we hope to make a recommendation, you know, in the next couple of months.
Have we ever, have we ever thought about maybe putting up a big tent in the parking lot, take, take over the parking lot for whatever the week of red and blue? I know March can be a dicey time of year, but if we can bring more people in, again, that's, that's the goal, so that's something maybe we consider. And maybe not, maybe not logical, but it's just something that probably.
Yeah, we're, we're open to any, any possibility.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bartels.
Moving on, we have a presentation on Rinzulli Schoolwide Enrichment. Dr. Janine Sempino, Sonia Hood, and Darren Raymar will be presenting.
Thank you, Board of Education. Thank you, Mr. Bartels. I want to thank Ms. Hood and Mr. Raymar for presenting with me this evening. This is a first of, we're hoping many presentations, and also inviting the principals and different people to come up and present with me. So many good things happening. Mr. Raymar is the perfect person, though, to help us lead this presentation. He has always been an advocate for enriching activities at Covert School, and I'm going to embarrass him, but he is here from the beginning of the stellar program and was the original, one of the original people trained on Rinzulli Schoolwide Enrichment. I think it was back in 1999.
I was actually trained in 1993 as a fourth grade teacher in another district. That's a old idea.
And we have Ms. Montmoreno in the audience, who was one of the original stellar teachers, who went through chaining and is constantly learning and growing. And I saw Mr. Figaro here as well, hiding over there, which he'll probably get me later for saying that. I don't see any others, I can't see. But if you're there, I thank you, because you are such a special part of this program. Our stellar program is based on school-wide enrichment. And I say "based on" because the idea was to bring enrichment activities to all students. Stellar actually stands for Success in Technology, Enrichment, Literacy, Library, and Research. And yes, it is a lot to do, and our stellar teachers work tirelessly throughout the day. We have a lot of new staff here in Rockville Center. I'm like a veteran person now, people say, you know, I call myself the wise old owl. So, we have a lot of new stellar teachers, new principals, and there's just a new way of looking at things, and it's pretty exciting. We had a training in school-wide enrichment on September 28th. We actually had planned that training two years ago, it was supposed to happen during COVID. But it was great, we had a wonderful trainer, and we have two more trainings ahead. And it was really a perfect day, and we were together, and teachers in the audience know, and it's so good to see you, how great it is to be in a room collaborating, sharing, sharing our fears, sharing our ideas, and just learning. And it was really wonderful, it was a great day. So, I thank you all for participating. We had all our stellar teachers, veteran and new, we had some classroom teachers, and we had elementary guidance counselors, as well as Mr. Hood and Mr. Raymar. We even had Mr. Raymar go to a summer Confrute Institute at the University of Connecticut. And again, he was reinvigorated, and we had so much fun. I just want to say also that, we're going to touch on it, but we also had the help of Mr. Zappi, and I want to say a special thank you to him, because in the spring, he worked with all the elementary principals on helping to create a grant to the Education Foundation for Schoolwide Enrichment, which is going to be wonderful this spring, and Mr. Raymar's going to talk a little bit about that. So, this is what school-wide enrichment focuses on, enrichment for all students through high levels of engagement, the use of enjoyable and challenging learning experiences that are constructed around students' interests, learning styles, and preferred modes of expression. It truly creates a collaborative school culture, and I'm going to let Mr. Raymar talk some more.
Thank you, Dr. Sempino. It's funny, in 1993, I was trained in the Rinzulli model at University of Connecticut. And to attend the Confrute this summer gave me an opportunity to see how the program changed and what is brand-new in it. And it goes back to the old saying, you know, good teaching is good teaching. A good teacher knows how to differentiate, provide activities for kids that meets not only their learning styles, but their academic levels, and taps their interests. And we're very lucky in Rockville Center, that's something that we have in each of our elementary schools, amazing teachers in the elementary school that do just that. So, the difference, I guess, in attending the three-day workshop this summer was, I had to do it virtually, which was obviously a big change from being live and, and, you know, in-person, but also to see that really what the program has changed is offering social, emotional components to it, which obviously, as Mr. O'Shea tapped into, with our sources of strength, it's really very important that that is what our focus is on top of everything else in all schools, that we make sure that children are feeling mentally stable, and that our staff is feeling mentally stable, and feeling good about themselves. And that's why this program is so amazing. The enrichment model is really based on the triad, and the triad really talks about three different types. The first type is the general exploratory activities. And basically, what that is, is it is exposing children to various topics, fields of study, and integrating content, thinking skills, and investigations. Examples include bringing in guest speakers for a school-wide career day. That's something, actually, we talked about when we attended the training with Dr. Sempino, that that is something at Covert that we were talking about, having a school, an old school, going back old school, and having some sort of career day, which is a very important thing, giving kids an opportunity to see different members of the community doing different things. You know, it sounds so simple saying that, but we did that for so many years, and it's kind of not happened for a variety of reasons. And I think that's a great way of introducing, you know, type one. Type one also includes creating interest centers, showing videos, directing students to websites, all the things that we do, and it's really not based on curriculum. It can be based on curriculum, but it's also being outside of the box, doing things that might be of interest. Then you, and also, what you need to know is, type one is really for everyone. Type two group activities really is more of developing higher-level thinking skills and classifying and analyzing data, advanced research, communication. Type two enrichment includes things that are not really planned in advance, because it's more individually-based. It's more for a group of students that are interested in something and taking it to the next level. It's research projects, it's personal assignments, it's learning opportunities that engage students in things they're interested in. And type three enrichment is really the biggest payoff, and that's not just performing or presenting to teachers and kids and their peers, it's really about coming up with a product, coming up with something that actually can be presented to a greater audience and make a difference. Examples of that include things like children creating philanthropy organizations and giving back to the community, students designing things that they sell and then benefit, whether it's an organization that they're interested in, or a, or using it to build a company. It's really giving kids the notion that they're leaders and in charge. So, that is what the enrichment triad is really all about.
But I forgot one thing. We actually had the middle school attend. We had Jay Jacobs from our middle school library and Maria LaSorsa. It was such a great connection. And while they were there, they were actually thinking of the eighth-grade community project, and how that is something that's like a real tier-three, where kids find an interest and reach out. So, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, that's it.
That was such a key component, having the middle school there, because they're working so hard to make that media center a place where children could go and explore, and even in different modes of, modes of creating some of their projects. So, I just wanted to put that out there.
Well, and let me also say that, you know, our first step, as Dr. Sempino said, is that we were trained, you know, in our first session, we're doing several other trainings throughout the year, and next year, the goal is to train classroom teachers in all the elementary schools and engage them in this process. I think the difference also between 1993, when I taught fourth grade, and, oh, God, that's so long ago, and today are, when I taught fourth grade, there was a curriculum, but you could be a lot more creative and do a lot more things, because you aren't in the confines of what New York State and Common Core and Next Gen standards are. Teachers today are obviously overwhelmed with the amount of things that we are giving to them, because of the fact that we are, you know, trying to meet these standards. So, we're not trying to overwhelm our staff. And honestly, in order to do the school-wide enrichment model in a full-fledged, full-on attempt, I don't know how you would actually, you would have to really individualize instruction for every child. So, what our goal is, is to bring in the school-wide enrichment model to the best of our ability, with tapping our teachers' interest, tapping our students' interest, creativity, and also not overwhelming everyone with more things added on the plate, because you can't just keep adding things on unless you have a school day that is 15 hours, seven days a week. And so, you know, again, trying to really make it manageable, reasonable, and exciting for not only the kids, but for our staff, because when the staff's excited, it transfers onto the students.
Good evening, everyone. So, Darren gave an excellent overview of the three types, the triad. The Rinzulli Schoolwide Enrichment Program is student-centered. So, when you look at that E and you see enjoyment, engagement, and enthusiasm, the program starts where the student begins. So, basically, it starts with tapping into student curiosity, and that's where Darren mentioned in the first type, the first one of the, of the triad. And it creates a spark for learning. So, it wouldn't be unusual to find out, or teachers asking students, what are their interests? What is their favorite subject? Because you want it to be student-centered. It's nothing that, it doesn't involve the teacher directing it and guiding it, the teacher facilitates, but it is student-initiated, which is the beautiful part about the enrichment activities. Students are given choice and voice. Students are also given opportunities to explore various ideas, topics, and areas of interest. Based on the videos or presentations, that's a part of that initial triad, students may tap into certain careers, they may be interested in certain careers. We also are going to explore for that very first piece, student inventories, which will help identify students' strengths and areas of, of interest. We have spoken about having Darren, since he went through the training, have his school possibly piloted, and then extend it to the other schools. There are varying, varying levels of rigor and challenge based on individual learning styles, strengths, and interests. So, for example, if a student is expressive, that student may want to select or follow up with an authentic, authentic poetry or a comic book. If a student is a tactile learner, meaning hands-on, that student may want to develop a craft business, something with arts and crafts, maybe jewelry-making, or something that represents that strength. If a student is a visual student, they may create a work of art, and then may be able to team with other students to make a mini art gallery. So, there's something for every student. It taps into students' creativity, the fact that they have a talent, they have a skill, it acknowledges and recognizes every student, and there's a little piece of self-efficacy in that, too, where students believe that they can do it. The third bullet, there's multiple ways to reach a solution, and there's not a single predetermined, single answer. And I think Darren, you tapped into that also. So, we have to respect students for where they are, where they start at, and then help to build, build and develop their skills so they get to an end goal. And all of this culminates basically into an end product, an end goal. So, students actually are taking the skills and concepts that they're learning in the classroom and creating an authentic product and an authentic task that's self-initiated, and they've acquired the skills to help them become successful with that end product and goal. But more so than that, more so than that, with the authentic task and goal, But more so than that, more so than that, with the authentic task and goal, if you look at the continuum and the process that they have to go through to create that end task, that end goal, are the process skills. And this is what every teacher strives to pull out of their students. So they're getting the creativity, they're getting communication, they're collaborating with other students, they're problem-solving, they're doing research. They may be interested in something but need to learn a little more. And then when they get into the type two, where they may have vendors from outside or business owners or specialists in that field to come and explore these different areas with the students, they may have to do a little bit of research involved in that. Organizational skills, analyzing, critical thinking skills, and that's where the magic happens. So this will stay with them far beyond the completion of that authentic task. So we're in the very preliminary early stages, but we're excited. We've gone through one training session, and we have several others that are lined up, and we're excited about it. And I will turn it over to Mr. Ray.
So enrichment clusters actually are something that have been around for a long time. And what, I think it was 2001 or 2002, Covert School, we wrote a grant to the Ed Foundation back then, and the Education Foundation supported it. And then the following year, they supported it again, and Mrs. Bach, who's a retired principal of Riverside, joined in as well, and Riverside and Covert engaged in enrichment clusters. Then it kind of fizzled out a little bit, and we brought it back at Covert several years ago, and we did it for a few years. And then we took a break because it's a very, it takes a lot of work and it takes a lot of resources and money. And we decided this year, or last year actually, after we had talked about going with the school-wide enrichment model and really being trained in Rinzouli, bringing back enrichment clusters. And all five elementary principals, the Mrs. Pike, Mrs. Pasquarell, and Mr. Walter, and Mr. Duffy and I, were very excited about doing this. Chris Zapia, a fifth-grade teacher at Covert and the teacher's center director, actually helped facilitate writing a grant to the Ed Foundation on behalf of all of the elementary schools. So each elementary principal brought a teacher with them into the Covert Stellar Center. We sat with Mr. Zapia, we wrote the grant. And I'll just tell you a little bit about what enrichment clusters are. And first of all, we need to thank the RVC Education Foundation, which I'm a proud member of, who is funding this and giving us a significant amount of money so that each school can engage this year in enrichment clusters. On top of that, Mr. Bartels, last year, managed to make sure that we had more money in our elementary school budgets because we had the same budget that we had in 1999 and 2020. So he gave us some money, and we're actually going to use some of that for enrichment clusters as well, knowing that some clusters cost more money than others. Like anything else, enrichment clusters are based on teacher interest because the teacher-staff member has to be able to be interested in it and teach the children. What's nice about it is it really is intergrade level, and it gives teachers an opportunity to teach something they're passionate about, engage students in something they might be excited about or not might have heard about or might want to do. And it gives an opportunity for the whole school to come together and do something different. So enrichment clusters really are, it enables students to share a common interest. When we select enrichment clusters, we ask the teachers to come up with something that they may be interested in. And basically, what we did at Covert, and Mr. Zapia shared with everyone, is an enrichment cluster information sheet. What it is, is giving your cluster a catchy phrase, which staff members will be involved, and a blurb about it. Also, what educational and higher-level thinking component you'll be tapping on and what product you want the kids to be able to finally, you know, to end the cluster with and come up with. So I'll give you some examples of just some of the clusters that we've been brainstorming. Brooklyn Sidewalk Games, Crafting Circateers, Dynamic Drones, Mission Impossible, The Nerf Challenge, Pizzazz with Poetry Writing, Feathers, Fern, Scales, Apps Around the World. Those are just some. And again, one of the great things about enrichment clusters are we don't let the kids go home and ask their parents what they should do. We have them do it in school so that they take ownership of something they might be excited in. Just because mom wants you to take tennis lessons doesn't mean that you might want to take tennis, you might want to do something else. So we don't want the parents to drive what the kids want to do. We also don't want the kids to be influenced by each other. So we kind of do it in a way that children are actually here about what the clusters are and then sign up. And we pretty much try to ensure that every child gets either the first, second, or third choice in the clusters. So the golden rule is that cluster activities come up with a product, as I said. Teachers choose what they wish to facilitate. The clusters help to develop student talents, and they're done during school hours. So we have five Fridays, I believe, that we're going to be doing this from May to June, and it's in the afternoon, anywhere between 60 minutes to two hours, depending on the school and depending on what, how many clusters are offered. But again, it's an exciting opportunity for teachers to share their interests and talents with children, and children to come up and see something they might be interested in. They might take the cluster and say, it's not something I'm interested in anymore, or vice versa, they might really be engaged in it. So we're very excited for this opportunity, that all five elementary schools are doing it, and that everyone's on the same page. And thank you to the teachers in advance for your work in doing this, because really, it takes the village, and the teachers create the projects, create the products, and order the items for it. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
Dr. Sampino, you.
You read my mind with the middle school connections? Because I was going to ask, that was my first question. So when you were describing it in the beginning, I'm so happy to hear that the middle school came down, it was a presence there, it's such a beautiful story, K-12, K-6, and then into the middle school and the eighth-grade project as well. My question is, I know you mentioned several times the upcoming trainings. In the interim, how often are the five elementary buildings communicating on the school-wide enrichment up until that point?
Our elementary principals meet a lot. They have a weekly meeting, and they all try to attend, and for the most part, they do. And that's one of the things that they talk about, as well as a host of other things in getting the year up and running. They have really worked, have been an incredible team, and in getting this off the ground, and just having fresh eyes on it, it's been incredible. And we have people doing great things, and we really are trying not to overwhelm, but truly taking what we're doing and making it stronger, making it better for our students. And that's kind of been the message this year. We do a lot of great things, but taking what we do and making it stronger, making it better. And I think that makes, takes a little bit of the overwhelmness, overwhelmingness of it away, because it is a lot, and we are doing enrichment clusters, and we are learning. And it was wonderful, after the training, a principal shared an email, I won't tell who, but in the email it said, "Excited to try new things." And isn't that the best? Like after a professional development, when you're excited to try new things, and you know it's okay to take that chance? And we have amazing people, and they are, you know, I can't say enough about just their willingness to share, and even share their concerns, because you know the biggest concern, any teacher will tell you, time. And they're willing to go out there and try these things and take Fridays because they realize it's important for kids to communicate, not be in front of a device all the time, plan together, problem solve, and these are all things that will happen. So we're excited about it.
Thank you.
I just had a couple of questions. As a teacher, I appreciate not adding another thing onto the plate. The school-wide enrichment model is obviously a process. It's something that's going to take a while to get in place and to do well. It's really a philosophy that should kind of infiltrate all aspects of education, both in the general education classroom, and then also certainly through Stellar, you know, utilizing the type one, the type one enrichment. I did have a few questions about type two and type three opportunities. I love the idea of enrichment clusters. It seems like a great way to get kids involved, participating in different activities with kids not in their classroom, possibly not in their grade. But I'm wondering if there's a way, instead of the clusters being teacher-driven, that they could be student-driven? I know that as part of Rinzouli, there is that profiler where we're looking at students' interests. To me, I think it would be a lot more meaningful for kids to be driving the clusters that they're able to go to, where I'm sure the teachers have, I mean, the ideas you listed sound phenomenal, I'm sure will appeal to many students. But really just tapping into the kids, maybe for the second rendition of the clusters?
It's funny, Ms. Hood actually did the profiler herself today. And she came up with how she likes to edit, and we were kind of brainstorming things, too, on how even kids could take the lead on a club. But we were, you know, like after you do these things, you brainstorm, especially when you get together in a bigger group, and you kind of, it gets, it's invigorating. When you're talking about like learning in kids and getting them excited, you can't help but get excited. So yeah, I think when we're at that point, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, it just, it seems like it would kind of fit more into the line of the philosophy of the program. And then certainly with type three enrichment, and again, school-wide enrichment is great because we're enriching everyone, but it's also a methodology to really reach out to your truly gifted children who don't have those opportunities per se on a daily basis to really delve deep into their interests and their passion and into the gifts that they have. So I'm wondering with the type three instruction, I understand that the model recommends that in the school there is a specialist who's gifted and talented, certified, who would be able to work, you know, possibly the Stellar teacher, it could, I guess, potentially be anyone, who would be able to really facilitate those kind of endeavors with kids. I was just wondering if we have any, if we're planning on maybe bringing in some sort of a program, possibly asking Stellar teachers, general education teachers, if they'd be interested in getting a gifted and talented certification? I don't know if that was, has been discussed at all?
That was not discussed, no.
I think that would be something that, I don't know if we can maybe have further conversations incentivizing it, I don't know.
We'd have to talk to our superintendent.
Well, exactly, yes. But just really looking into it, because it seems like it is definitely recommended by the program, really just to ensure that those students are being serviced in the way that they really need to be.
Our train, and I will tell you, we had a wonderful trainer who was so impressed with our people in our training and with our program and how we just really challenge all students. So it was really, it was great to have her there. And she was just a...
Energy, right?
High energy, which you need, and it was great.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you again, and thank you for the tree bag, RVC PTA Council. Yay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, move to our external orders presentation. Just as some background, the district has three different types of auditors that work with us every year. First is our claims auditor, somebody that goes through every check that gets paid through the district. We have a claims order that goes through, make sure that all documentation is in place, invoices have been received, services have been rendered, there's appropriate sign-offs and so forth. And that's a claims auditor. He works on a, every couple of week basis, every time we do our warrants. Then we have an internal auditor. The internal auditor will come in each year and review a different segment of the operations of the district. So they may come in and look at payroll one year, then they'll come in and look at human resources, technology, all the different areas of operations of the school district. And then they provide a report. The last group is the external auditors. They review the financials of the district. They provide our financial statements at the end of this year, each year, and, you know, verify that all of our funds are done appropriately, expenditures are appropriate, and the overall financial condition of the district is well-maintained. So I'd like to ask Tom Smith from EFPR Group. This is a different Tom Smith than we had earlier.
Thank you for having me. I'm just going to do a quick summary of the financial statement audit. We issued clean, unmodified opinions on the financial statements, as well as the extra classroom activity funds, and the single audit, which is the compliance audit of the district's use of federal awards. There were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in our review of the internal controls of the processes of the transactions. I'll point out that management was a pleasure to work with, they provided everything on a timely basis. Real quick, from a numerical standpoint, at the district-wide financial statements, the expenses exceeded revenue by 10.2 million. That was really driven by the increases in expenses due to long-term health insurance, actuarial determinations. And at the general fund, really where the district operates from, there was a positive change in fund balance of $2.3 million that had to do with a $1.4 million increase in revenue and an increase in expenses of $2.4 million over budget. With the general fund, your reserves increased by $1.5 million. That's really funded mostly by the employee retirement reserve, which was increased by $1.2 million. And one item we really want to point out is that the district, the unassigned fund balance at year-end was below the 4% unassigned of the subsequent year budget. That's a very important compliance law to be in accordance with. A lot of districts these days are over that because of unknowns due to COVID, but Rockville Center was able to still stay under that percentage. At this point, I want to turn it over to the board. If they have any questions, anything I can summarize from the audit. Great. Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom. Before Mr. Bartels has an opportunity to speak, I note, he was appointed at a public work session as the acting superintendent, so I'd just like to, in case somebody here doesn't know, he was appointing acting superintendent at our last meeting. And as far as all the public comments we got back, he's doing a great job in reaching out to the community and answering questions very quickly, and I'd just like to give him a round of applause for accepting it. And now opportunity for, I should say, acting superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. O'Shea. I want to take this opportunity first to thank everyone for their confidence in me just to assume the role of acting superintendent. Board, administrators, teachers, all staff, and the parents and community members who have emailed me or offered me words of support at various events have helped me make this transition. It's been a pleasure to work in such a great district for over 20 years, and I look forward to a different role to help bring some stability during the board's search for a new superintendent. Over the last week, the number of staff and students quarantined due to COVID-positive tests or being in direct contact has declined. We had been running about 20 to 30 quarantines a day. It was one week, we were up over 40. We are now down to 10 today. So our numbers are scaling way back, which is a great sign. We do have quarantine support instruction in place, being provided virtually for all students out on quarantine, has been running smoothly. Access is currently being provided to all core instruction at the elementary level and to all everyday courses with numerical grades at the secondary level. Weekly testing of staff began this week for staff members who have not provided evidence of being vaccinated. Right now, our staff are about 90% vaccinated. I will be issuing a letter tomorrow to staff and parents with some additional information on testing and vaccination levels. Our after-school support programs at both the elementary and the secondary levels began this week for students who need some additional support. Middle School is also looking to put together a support program before school, and we hope to have more information on that coming out shortly. At our last meeting, the work session, we talked about reduced tax rates. I thought it was important to reiterate that at this board meeting so more people could hear it. The district did not increase the tax levy at all this year. In addition, the adjusted base proportions, assigned by Nassau County, declined by over 1% this year for Class 1 homeowners. That's a very important piece because it has been increasing every single year. And what the adjusted base proportions do is it assigns the portion of our tax levy that the homeowners have to pay, as opposed to the business owners, apartment owners... owners, and utilities. And what that means is the total amount that the Class 1 homeowners had to pay actually went down by over $1 million this year. That reduction led to a reduction in taxes for an average home of about $200. Unfortunately, due to the changing assessment system, some of that reduction may have been lost due to assessment increases on many homes. But overall, this should be, this should have been very good news for most of our taxpayers, because hopefully we saw a lot of decreases this year. This month is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I just wanted to acknowledge some of our sports teams who have shown some support in the following ways. The varsity girls volleyball team will be wearing pink jerseys and dedicating Saturday's game to breast cancer awareness. The girls JV soccer team hosted Garden City, and both teams wore pink bows and pre-wrapped. Swimming team wears awesome pink caps in October, according to Ms. Rosetta. Both cheerleading teams are wearing breast cancer bows the whole month, and the JV football team wore pink socks for the entire month. Maybe a couple that I missed, but I think that's a great show of support by our students. And I'd also like to wish all of our athletic teams good luck in the playoffs and the championship events, which are beginning this week. One other thing I wanted to touch upon is actually a recent problematic situation. It involves the behavior of some of our middle school students around the community. Unfortunately, they've been misbehaving at local businesses and on school grounds. Children have been throwing food, creating disturbances, and being disrespectful to business owners and security staff. Village and school officials have had discussions about this behavior and the need for it to be stopped. We are asking parents of middle school students to remind them about being respectful to both people and property. Our middle school principal Sheila McGinn sent out a letter to middle school parents yesterday to address this issue and explain what is being done within the school to combat the problem. It also needs to be stated that there are cameras at all of our schools, and if something happens at one of our schools, it will most likely be caught on camera, students will be disciplined. We actually had that issue recently and had to discipline several students for disruptive behavior at the high school on the track. So please remind your children at all levels to be respectful. Also like to ask Jeannie Love to make a couple of comments. I know she's been speaking with Ms. McGinn about this situation, I think has a couple of extra comments.
So Ms. McGinn and I have been in constant contact regarding this situation. The middle school has been addressing the behaviors on a daily basis. They make announcements, they have lunch study assemblies, and the teachers are discussing appropriate behavior with the students on a daily basis. They also embed social-emotional learning in all of the lessons, and this year they are specifically addressing behaviors that are needed to resocialize the students who, of course, due to COVID, certainly lost some socialization development opportunities over the last year and a half, which for young students, it might be a year and a half to us as adults, but to younger people, a year and a half developmentally really seems to be a larger chunk of time. So they're really doing everything they can to support the students when they are in school during the day, to help them develop skills so that when they are outside of the school setting, that they're able to generalize those skills appropriately, particularly when they're independent of their parents. Additionally, Ms. McGinn just asked me to let anyone, everyone here know that if they have any questions or concerns, that they could certainly call her and reach out to her if you have any concerns or worries or information that you'd like to share with her.
Thank you. That's it for my comments.
Thank you, Jeannie, thank you, Mr. Bartels. At this point, opportunity for board members.
I'd like to start by thanking Mr. Bartels. Thank you for your willingness to step into the role of acting superintendent of schools. Working with you over the past three and a half months, I found you to be one of the most capable, intelligent, and thoughtful members of our administrative staff. You continually set the bar high, both for yourself and the district as a whole. I'm confident that our children will be well-served under your guidance, and I'm very much looking forward to working with you in this new role. I would also like to thank the rest of our administrative team, our teachers, and our building staff for their flexibility. Change is rarely easy, especially when it happens unexpectedly. While the past few weeks have been difficult, you have provided the stability needed to ensure that our children's day-to-day has remained unaffected. I'm grateful for your commitment to our district. About two weeks ago, US News and World reports released their elementary and middle school rankings. I was so pleased to see that both Watson School and Covert School ranked in the top 100 elementary schools in New York State. Congratulations to both buildings' administration and staff. Our district's rankings are important, as they inform perspective on our children as they apply to college or post-secondary educational programs, as well as our school district and our community as a whole. I'm hopeful that through a collective analysis of and reflection on our academic program, we can make positive curricular changes that will increase necessary supports, as well as diversify our course offerings, thereby showcasing each of our school building's true potential. I'm looking forward to these upcoming conversations. Congratulations to all the students who were recognized this evening. Your accomplishments are impressive. I really enjoyed the performance by our chamber singers. It was absolutely beautiful. Finally, I'd like to wish our student athletes the best of luck as they finish their regular seasons and move into the playoffs. I've enjoyed following all of your successes thus far. For those of you who have not yet joined, the athletic department runs a fabulous Instagram page, which highlights many of Southside's games, matches, and meets. I would highly recommend following the pages. Thank you.
Thank you.
Got this big fancy microphone. Thank you, Mr. Kroger. I'd like to take a moment again to congratulate our National Merit Scholarship recipients, our student government and class officers, our distinguished Newsday Top 100 athletes, and our Cyclone baseball team champions and coaches. Congratulations to our Southside football team and coaches for representing us so well during homecoming as well. What an amazing group of scholars, athletes, and well-rounded students that we're raising here in Rockville Center. You've not only made your family and friends proud through your great work, but you are certainly also the pride of our teachers, administrators, and board members. Congratulations to you all. Thank you to Dr. Sampino, Ms. Hood, and Mr. Raymar for their presentation this evening, and to Dr. Zuar for attending. Thank you so much to the Rockville Center Council of PTAs for their beautiful gift. You are truly our partners, and it means so much to us. Dr. Friling, we always love having you and the chamber singers. You're just amazing and beautiful. Thank you so much for that beautiful performance. I appreciate the kind words from Mr. Bartels as well. This is my fifth year on the school board, and it's been my honor and privilege to serve the community in this capacity. There hasn't been one day that has gone by that I haven't taken this role extremely seriously. The sample of students we saw tonight, among the many countless others in this great district, is what motivates me every day. The students are why I'm here doing this job, and I feel lucky to do it. That being said, our students don't take this journey alone, so I want to take this opportunity to thank the many administrators and teachers who have dedicated themselves so heartily to our students as well. There's one item on the agenda later that's going to require board approval, and I can't let it go by without commenting on it. Ingram and Smith has been the district's council for decades, and I would be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to publicly thank them for the work that they have done to make this district the safe, secure, and strong district that it has become. Their advisement and counsel has been extremely valuable to us, and I'm sorry to see this relationship come to an end. But I would like to just publicly thank them for everything they've done for us. Mr. Bartels, I've had the pleasure of working with you these last five years, and I want to express my gratitude toward you and my confidence in you as our acting superintendent. Cannot think of one instance in any meeting I've been in over these last years where you didn't know the answer on the spot. You're a wealth of knowledge, you're intelligent, you're patient and kind, and you're dedicated to this district and to our students. So I stress that our children's are in great hands. With Mr. Bartels, his cabinet, and the amazing faculty and staff we are blessed with in Rockville Center, I'm confident we are going to have a strong academic year for all of our students. I wish our students and our community a very safe and happy Halloween. Enjoy your celebrations and parades and all of the fun things that you do. Good luck to all of our teams who are playing in playoff games as well. We are and always will be Southside Strong.
Thank you. Congratulations to our National Merit Scholarship-commended students, student government officers, class presidents, as well as to our student athletes who were honored here tonight. You are all leaders, and we are so very proud of you and your impressive accomplishments. Thank you, of course, to the chamber singers as well for your beautiful performance. Thank you to the PTA Council for the beautiful gift and the recognition, and Mr. Bartels for your kind words. Mr. Bartels, I also wanted to thank, take a moment to thank you for stepping into this leadership role. You are poised to take over, clearly you are proactive already, and a theme that we heard several times tonight was that you're open to hearing input from the community and asking questions, and you're a reflective and proactive leader. So thank you. Your team to your left couldn't be stronger, and I'm really confident that we're going to continue to lead the way throughout the school year. So thank you so much for everything that you're doing and will continue to do for our students and staff. Thank you to Ms. Ramsey for being here tonight. Mr. Murphy, I wish you well. Hope you're feeling better soon. Dr. Zuar, thank you also for being here tonight and to presenting options, and again, having that conversation with Mr. Bartels about being open for parent input in terms of concert, upcoming concert performances. Dr. Sampino, Ms. Hood, and Mr. Raymar, thank you so much for the presentation. I know you were so excited to finally be able to talk about curriculum and things that you're excited about and passionate about, and it showed. So thank you so much. And thank you to the Ed Foundation for bringing the enrichment clusters to all of our elementaries. Thank you to all of our wonderful principals and our amazing teachers, and I wish all of our students and staff a wonderful school year. Thank you.
When contemplating what I was going to say this evening, one resounding theme came through, and that was hope. This jam-packed agenda filled with accomplished athletes, student scholars, student government officers, and a live music performance reeks of normalcy, and that gives me hope. Having live presentations of our wonderful administrators about curriculum enhancement and discussing the expansion of winters, winter concerts, red and blue, is something we've all hoped for over the past year. Congratulations to the Triumph Music Honor Society inductees. The performances at the IB Music Night last night were outstanding. Thank you to the chamber singers and Dr. Friling and Dr. Zuar for all your hard work. I love hearing all your voices in person. Congratulations to the boys' baseball Nassau County team champions, and to the Newsday Top 100 athletes, and to the National Merit Scholarship-commended students, and the student government officers and class presidents. You, our students, continue to make us all proud. Perhaps the biggest reason, in my opinion, for hope is Mr. Bartels agreed to be our acting superintendent. Your experience and your vast institutional knowledge provides stability in our time of change. Transparent, timely communication, and great hope for the future of this district. And I thank the PTA Council and all the PTAs for our gift, and thank you. I look forward to working with you, Mr. Bartels, and the rest of the board, our teachers, our principals, and our administration, and I think there's great hope for this year.
Thank you.
Wow. I don't know, I don't know if there's anything left, but I'd quickly like to thank the Council of PTAs and the PTAs in our buildings for giving us a gift, which we will open later and find out what it is. Thank you for the chamber singers for giving up their time to present us with the song. Congrats to all the students who came today. Rockville Center is a stronger and better school district because they participate, they are active in our, in the things that they do, in our athletics, our clubs, our sports, and it's such an important part to enhance their education experience with us. And once again, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Robert Bartels for the position of acting superintendent. I have so much confidence in him that he is going to take us to great places this year. Okay, right now, we'll open up the floor for opportunity for visitors. Please state your name and address when you come up. If, just before anybody gets, if there are any students here that have been waiting to speak, I'd like to just give them the opportunity to come up first, and then adults can follow. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Raichman. I'm a student at Southside High School, and I live at 23rd. So good evening. Thank you and Dr. Zuar for taking the important step tonight for beginning the discussion about important concerts for RBC schools. This experience is extremely important to myself and many other students in the district. I'm a senior at Southside High School, and I'm an all-state jazz bass alternate. School music was my introduction to the world that I live in now. I got my start in music in Valley Stream Public Schools and really began to develop my career in music in our Rockville Center. Teachers like Mr. Pomponio, Mrs. Mark, Mr. LeBron, Mr. Cutino, who is here tonight, Ms. Brickman, and Mr. Law helped me find opportunities in and outside of the classroom that pushed me to where I am today. If it weren't for my school music classes, I wouldn't have gotten the opportunity to audition for Old County, Nassau Suffolk, and eventually all-state and all-national. My experiences in Old County and Nassau Suffolk, performing with like-minded peers, shaped my view of music and are now driving me to pursue it in college. It's no exaggeration to say that school music shaped me and molded me into the person I am today. All of this started, however, on the stage in my elementary school's auditorium, where I was inspired to join my elementary school's jazz ensemble. And without that important piece of seeing my peers perform in person, live, I would not be where I am today. This is not an issue of policy or missing a fun event for many of the kids involved in the music programs across the district. It's a personal issue. It's me and my peers, and it's an issue that we take seriously. Myself and my peers have stayed engaged and informed with this issue, and most of the SGA officers you saw tonight are involved in this music program. Performance at all levels is equally important to our student musicians, but the lack of performance at the elementary and middle school levels is particularly disheartening. Myself and many of my peers pursue music seriously because of the exposure we got at such a young age. The performance you heard tonight by the chamber singers was the first performance by a high school ensemble in over 20 months. Been a long drought of performance opportunities. Imagine if your child played soccer and they didn't have a game for two years. That's what we're dealing with. I play... I play in other bands outside of school, and we are planning this year to play in front of only vaccinated audiences. So this, that is not something that's new, and that's not something that's would be unique to this district if we decided to move forward with that way. So I implore you to exercise whatever measures you need to do to get our performance back on stage with people in seats. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a class president of the freshman class, Mick Morris, and I just want to talk about that all of the decisions that people are making today, the students love them, and I think that that's like commonly disregarded. People don't realize that we are on the front lines of everything. And we always talk about the parents when we talk about in-school concerts, when you get to see your kid. But I think nobody's really talked about the effect of the kid when you see, when you're not just told that you're great at something, when you get a standing ovation, when you're playing an instrument, and you could actually see that you can do something and you can succeed. So I'm not going to sit here and make a 20-hour speech because I know everybody wants to get home, but I just want, when we're making all the decisions, I'd just like everyone to take into consideration that our lives are greatly affected, and it would be great if people could realize that. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Luke Trenchney. I live at 13th Avenue. I was just wondering if there's any statement regarding our physics teacher. We all like him very much, and we were just wondering if we could get him back eventually at this time.
Hand that to you, Mr. Bartels.
Yeah, he's out right now. Unfortunately, we cannot comment on it at this point.
Thank you.
And for the students that feel like we're not, we didn't, we don't think about what your feelings are, it seems like we're just talking about the parents and the audience, but believe me, we want you to have the best experience you possibly can up on the stage, whether you're singing or playing, playing an instrument. So we do definitely want that normalization for you as your parents and you as well, so. Any other students?
Celeste DeTulio. And I just wanted to address the continued masking of our little ones. Electriarians in the union are given a handheld device to take with them when they have to work in a confined space. It monitors the air quality in that particular space, measuring the oxygen level, determining if there is carbon monoxide present, detecting the presence of methane, et cetera. If the alarms on the device go off, the electricians must immediately leave the confined space that they are in because the air quality is considered dangerous and hazardous to their health. When you hold the monitor in front of an individual's mouth in a normal setting, the alarms on the device are not activated because the air quality is safe to breathe. However, when that individual then puts on a mask and you insert the monitoring wand of this device behind the mask to test the air that that individual is breathing in, it takes less than 30 seconds for the alarms on the device to go off. So to recap, if the alarms on this device go off, the adult is supposed to leave the area immediately... area immediately because the air is not safe to breathe in and is considered hazardous to their health. Now, add to that a child who is required to breathe in hazardous air all day long, day after day, a child who is growing and developing, whose organs are growing and developing, whose brain is growing and developing, all without adequate levels of oxygen while breathing in air that is considered dangerous and hazardous to an adult. We do not know the long-term effects these children will suffer as a result of extended exposure to hazardous air quality. I hope that I am wrong, but when we start to see developmental issues, health issues, chronic illnesses in addition to psychological issues, and parents start to put two and two together, they will be angry and they will be looking for someone to blame. Sometimes putting two and two together takes a while. Look how long it took to connect mesothelioma to asbestos and thalidomide to birth defects. Thalidomide, by the way, along with numerous other harmful drugs, was FDA-approved. Let that sink in. So, when the lawsuits start pouring in, I guess it will be the taxpayer that'll be on the hook for the tragic decision to force students, especially the little ones who are developing, to wear masks. A mandate is not, I repeat, not a law. It is a suggestion, and I hope that the federal money you are receiving to enforce this mandate will have been worth it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jordan O'Callaghan. I am a student at Southside High School, and I live out One Road. I would like to speak to the issue regarding live concerts at our schools. I have been a fortunate member of multiple choruses and bands throughout the Rockville Center School District, and one of the most important parts of learning a piece is to perform it, not just to our peers but to a live audience. And as a senior, I would love to be able to see at least one of my parents there, to see me go off and perform for my last time on this wonderful stage, whether it be in Twelve Angry Jurors, which I am in right now, or the Spring Musical. I know that there are problems coming up right now regarding masks and social distancing, but I implore you, please, just give us something so our parents can see us perform, so we can have an audience, so we can have that rush of performing that comes along with the people sitting here. You guys are experiencing it right now. You have an audience watching you and listening to the issues that you want to speak about. Music does that for me and for many other students here. So, please, I know it's going to be difficult, and however you may, I just hope that we get to perform for a live audience soon.
Thank you.
Hello. Debbie Quavis for Rutland Avenue. I'm here tonight to speak to you as a board member of Rockville Center Sponsors of the Arts. You've heard from the students now. Many of the students really want the live performances. I'm here to advocate for that as well. While many of the students have been able to go back to some type of normal in their extracurricular life, the music students still have not had that experience. They have gone through almost two full years of concerts being canceled, having to record themselves on Zoom individually in their basements, having Old County competitions canceled, and not being able to play in front of a live audience. Parents have missed out on those performances as well, and sometimes those performances would be their child's last one as a student in the Rockville Center School District. I'm asking you, please, please, find a way to get these concerts to be live and in person. Our music students and parents are counting on you, and I would be happy to volunteer my time to assist. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Jayden Wetstein, Five. I will also be talking about the winter concerts. I actually wasn't planning to speak tonight because of how eloquently Mr. Raichman had prepared a lovely speech for you all, but I just kind of want to. There's this thing. I am planning to go to music school as a performance major, and I find that when we're discussing all these protocols and things, I think we neglect to acknowledge the emotional impact that performance has on us students. I am an avid member of the Chamber Singers here. I'm one of the officers from the Drama Guild, so I have a lot of experience performing on the Southside Stage, and there's just something about having a large live audience filled with your family, your friends, your community members, that just gives you such a rush of adrenaline, and there's really almost something inexplicable about it that I think I would really implore you to consider in your decision-making because, at its core, that's really what performing is about. It's about sharing something with not only your fellow ensemble members, your co-actors, your whomever, but it's with the transmission of a message with your audience, whether that be through text, sound, video, any of these things. And I think that it is, it's very, I think, and talking about whether we be asking for vaccinations or not, I think, I know at least I have been accepted as an All-State to the Honors Choir, and they're requiring vaccinations for all of the students. So, I don't think, at least, I think if we were to ask the community to consider either providing vaccination, at least, say, at the middle school where we could have a floor split, or here, we could have separate sections, I don't think that would be too much of a jump because I think they would be able to sympathize with us students, especially me, who is a senior, and this would kind of be like our little last hurrah, and it's been so long since we've had this opportunity. So, I really would love to just have that idea in your heads as you are trying to come up with solutions for our concerts through the year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Gina Rebound, 24 Artsley Place. On behalf of RVC Acts, I'd like to thank the Board for acting quickly to ensure the leadership of our district. Mr. Bartels, RVC Acts would like to say a special thank you for stepping up and jumping in to lead our district in this time of uncertainty. We want to thank you for responding to emails expeditiously, but most importantly, with transparency, respect, and tact. You showed up on our children's first day of school, and since then, we have seen you at numerous events showing up for our kids. So, again, a heartfelt thank you. On behalf, personally, I just wanted to comment again about the Performing Arts. We heard a lot of pleas tonight to allow the Performing Arts students, which I guess these days I have to say the privilege, of a live audience. While I realize we still have restrictions, I'd like to suggest, actually, I'd like to join their plea and ask that we approach the winter concerts and activities much like the rest of the state. Recently, I saw The Lion King on Broadway. We had three options: we could show a vaccine card, a negative test, or not attend at all. I implore the district to follow these same practices. I really don't see a need for a community survey. I see a need for community options: proof of vaccine, negative test, or, again, attend virtually. And how many people are we actually talking about? Rockville Center has 72% of the entire population vaccinated. That's entire population, including children. If you look at adults, which I'm assuming all of the parents of these students are, that's 82% are fully vaccinated for all of Long Island. Nassau County having significantly higher numbers in Suffolk, so you're talking about over 85% that are fully vaccinated, and I'm sure would have no problem showing their vaccine card to attend their children's events. Seniors like the students who spoke tonight deserve to have their parents experience their hard work, and those parents deserve to see the fruits of that labor. So, on behalf of all of them, I'm just asking that you reconsider and allow the options that much of the state is offering. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Frank Van Sant, 76 Tanyard Lane, Huntington, New York. I'm the president of the Teachers Association. The RVCTA would also like to congratulate Mr. Bartels on his appointment as interim superintendent. We support the Board's decision to have Robert Bartels lead in this transition period. His success, our success as an educational community, will depend on how well the school board supports his day-to-day decision-making. The problem right now is that the school board, with its triumvirate majority, isn't inviting stakeholder voices, the teachers, to the planning table. Things are being thrown at us by the board, causing angst, confusion, anger, and dysfunction. The examples are sadly repetitive, and in School Board Recognition Week, we teachers are here to recognize the board's pattern. We teachers, fully proud of the work we do, are here to express our dissatisfaction with this conduct. Quarantine support, no warning, no planning, simply an order issued, and leave the district educators and administrators to sort it out. Back-to-school night, parent-teacher conferences, same thing. The truth is that in July and August, we could have been planning productively, ahead of time and without multitasking. Instead, we were fighting over soccer coaches. What a waste of time and taxpayer dollars for us to be in arbitration over the soccer coaches. A school board member has a personal disappointment, and full vengeance is enacted by the triumvirate. How do the county champions and the Nassau County Coach of the Year not get invited back? How ironic that they were replaced by a person with a similar private lesson connection that the board complained about in the first place. How do you expect coaches to run year-round programs when they have no fair expectation of returning year to year? We don't have that answer. Even worse, when a board member personally doesn't follow district protocols, what do we get? Our member gets blamed, and vengeance is enacted in the form of more tax dollars wasted. How do you expect personnel to function when the board is openly attacking them? We don't have that answer. Are we in full compliance with medical coverage? We don't have that confidence. What programs will be changed without teacher input? We don't know yet. What we do know is that meanness and vengefulness should not be guiding precepts for board members. We know that the present troubling trio, Board, is throwing decisions at teachers with zero teacher input, to the detriment of all of us. In July 2019, William Miller, the president of the New York State School Board Association, published an article talking about helicopter school boards. In it, Miller warns against school board members overstepping their bounds and committing the sin of micromanagement. Miller says, quote, "Show me a district where the board members make decisions on the day-to-day operations, and I will show you a dysfunctional school district." Miller urges board members to, quote, "trust professionals to make the decisions that should be theirs to make." In School Board Recognition Week, we teachers of Rockville Center recognize that the triumvirate board is arrogantly disdainful, bullying staff, ignoring educational leadership, sidestepping teacher involvement, wasting time, professional acumen, and untold thousands in tax dollars. You are creating chaos, not quality. You are creating angst, not excellence. I suggest that the path to excellence is through your educational leadership, the excellent people you invested in, and not, as it has been since July, through a tinpot dictatorship. What superintendent will ever want to come here if this is how you continue to act? Thank you.
All right. Well. All right. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes on the agenda?
So moved.
Any, all in, a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can we have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can we have a motion to approve the receipt of the financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can we have a motion to approve items for Action A through, I'm sorry, I'm going, A through F?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions?
I have a question on the Khan Academy.
Kelly, I don't think you might.
Thank you. This one works, I think. The Khan Academy data protection, why is it just singled out? Are we adding it now for some reason? Did the regulation broaden to include it, or?
Yeah, it's part of ED Law 2D.
Yeah.
So, it's just something we have to have in place.
Gotcha. So, there's other things, I'm assuming, that we've already added to be covered under this. Now, we're just adding Khan Academy, is that right?
Correct.
And the research through BOCs is included. So, things that research through BOCs is included, Khan Academy is its own entity and it's free, so we have to sign this agreement.
Gotcha. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Maybe just an explanation, resolution for the Board to appoint Lamb and Barnarsky as general counsel. We all, that was approved anonymously, so we're moving forward as of November 1st with them to represent the Rockville Center School District. I'm sorry. We will maybe move forward.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Do you want to be opposed? Anybody want to be opposed? A motion to adjourn?
No, Mr. Rocher.
Yes.
Sorry, you have to take a motion on the acceptance of a gift, please.
Oh, we never did?
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. I'd like to, Mr. Bartels.
Superintendent recommends acceptance of the gifts mentioned on the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.
Have a great night.